I'm here and acknowledge any guests that's here today. So, uh, the first thing we're gonna do, we're gonna get Mr. Bomby, uh, for in. And he's had the oath.
I've drawn that in.
You're a new commissioner, Ken.
I am. I've drawn that in.
Congratulations, Mr. Bomby.
Yeah, I got something. I thought I was gonna get fired, man.
It's actually Mr. Bomby.
What I said.
Thomas Thompson.
He has, um, he's just up at the.
We weren't elected this year.
No, he just has to be his, uh. There he is. And, um, Bomby will sign there and now.
Okay, we're gonna do this together. And what we'll do is, I'm gonna say hi and you're gonna say your name. You're gonna say your name. Raise, raise your hand if you.
Hi, here's Bomby.
Hey, Wesley Thompson.
Okay, do so as where that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Newton County District Three and appreciate it full.
Why am I in the open?
Of a safe action and will be the best of my ability to preserve, protect, defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the state, of this state. And furthermore, so I swear that I will, I have not directly nor indirectly paid, offered, or promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or any value things, valuable things, or promised any public office or employment as a reward for the giving or withholding of vote at the election at which I was elected. Furthermore, so I swear that I will not directly, indirectly, uh, interested in any contract with or, or claim against the county, accept or contract or claims as I've expressed authority by my law, by law, and accept such warrant as may issue in my fee of office, so let me go. Let me go.
Bomby, all right?
I forgot all about.
I'm gonna need to get you in there.
Maybe, maybe.
Mr. Thompson, I'm just being sure we're gonna give my face.
I'm glad you remembered that.
Well, you just don't need a vote. What the hell? This doesn't bound me for four more years, does it?
I think.
Hell, around here it's life. Still dead.
Now, you're gonna flip us over the page.
This is on payroll, now?
I guess so.
Right there. We have two of these up front and back. And we'll flip it off.
Man, you really did get hired, didn't you?
I did.
And you gotta pay all that money back?
Just a very archetypal.
Where've you been?
Uh?
Where've you been?
I don't know.
You might owe us some money.
Uh?
You might owe us some money.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of. You don't owe me money back, do you? More than that.
Appreciate all of them, Bomby.
Yeah. Yeah, you might owe us a little bit.
Okay, now we're going to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number one, to discuss if appropriate, approve $974.12 refund to the taxpayer on property ID 24893. And, uh, Mr. Davis, are you gonna present this today?
Yeah, I was gonna say, remember what's, uh, burnt? Um, they can't pay on December 16th by Toledo Ben Title in, um, in a sale of the property, actually. And then on December 31st, Southside Bank came and paid it on behalf of the taxpayer. So we contacted Toledo Ben Title and Southside Bank. Both of them said to give this refund back to the taxpayer because they're no longer, Southside's no longer the mortgage company and it was, the other was paid in escrow when it was sold. So that refund will go back to the taxpayer.
Okay. Just the same one we acted on last meeting?
Well, they should be new ones.
They are new.
Yeah, they should be new ones.
I hear a motion.
I make that motion that we pay the taxpayer a refund of $974.12.
Right. You too.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Bomby that we refund the $974.12 to the taxpayer 24893. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Uh, number two, discussion appropriate approval, $1,199.70 refund to taxpayer property ID 17427.
This was taxpayer, um, Amy Bush. She paid on the web and she overpaid. She said she doesn't know how much she overpaid. Um, she actually owed $1,851.96 and she paid $3,051.66. So the difference in that that'll be refunded to her is $1,099.70. She said that she must have double added something, so she just paid five cents you'll pay.
Okay, share a motion.
Make a motion that we refund, uh, taxpayer for 747, $2,199.70.
Second?
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Bomby that we refund the $1,199.70 to the taxpayer property ID 17427. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Uh, number three, discussion appropriate, approve $985.10 refund to the taxpayer property ID 63777.
On this one, it was paid by Garland Smith Abstract in a closing for $985.10 on November the 12th. The taxpayer sent us a check on January 19th to pay the same $985.10. So the taxpayer will be refunded for his $985.10 that he paid.
Okay. Motion.
I make a motion that we, uh, refund, uh, tax, tax ID 63777, uh, $985.10.
Second?
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Bomby that, uh, we refund the $985.10 to, to, uh, property ID 63777. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Y'all, y'all are keeping accurate records of all these refunds to where if anything ever came back, we could identify them because of this coming through court and I don't wanna be approving something that's not being kept record.
Yes, we, um, we actually do, and each of these enter the tax account and then we also have, you know, the accounts that she does the refunds out of as well, keep a copy of the refunds.
Well, I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Number four, discussion appropriate approved proposal and authorized, uh, Guthrie House Leveling for Leveling the Powell Hotel. Uh, he came over and looked at the Powell Hotel and it is about three inches out of, out of whack there and, uh, he wants to, uh, charge us $4,200 and he, he didn't see anything that would be additional to that, so, so I'm just asking for approval for so he can go to work on that.
I make that motion. Nine seconds.
I was cheating what he said, wasn't I?
Uh, or 200.
I was cheating what he said, wasn't I?
That's what it was, wasn't it? Or 200?
About 46, I think.
Oh. Okay, motion been made by Mr. Bomby, uh, second by Mr. Thompson that we authorize, uh, uh, the house lever to level the Powell Hotel for $4,200. Any discussion?
I just wanted that note there to say, uh, not responsible for any damage that's made, uh, during the, uh, leveling. Is that standard? I know it's not.
That's standard because when you start leveling then, uh, if you crack sheet rock on inside or something else comes loose on the inside, he's not gonna be responsible for that because he don't know what that would be started with.
Yeah.
All in favor? Five oh. Okay, number five is to approve the contract for emergency management vehicle. Mr. Sherry Moore?
Uh, five and six are both gonna have to be tabled because the contract's not ready.
I didn't hear you re-mask when I got here, Nate, so.
That's it, those five and six are gonna need to be tabled because the contract's not ready.
Okay. Uh, you heard what Mr. Sherry said, so, uh, will do anybody make that motion to table five and six?
I'm sorry. I make the motion that we, uh, table five and six until we, uh, get the contract prepared to approve.
Second?
Motion been made by Mr. White and, uh, second by Mr. Bomby that we table item number five and number six. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Uh, number seven is accept for decline settlement offer from Texas Association of County regarding, uh, courthouse repairs. Uh, we're needing to enter into executive session and we will, uh, legal counsel suit to the author, authorized grant under government code chapter 555-0718. And the second one is the, uh, pending litigation and, uh, regarding litigation and this 551.074. So if, uh, everybody would be removed from the courtroom and we'll call y'all back as soon as, uh, we go back into session.
George, I'm gonna go ahead and silence you and turn off your video.
Yes, and we'll call you when we get ready to go back in general session.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, Shannon, we're back uh on?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, uh number seven, the accept or decline the settlement offer for Texas Association of County Regard and Courthouse repair. So I hear motion to accept or decline. All right, second. I assume that's to decline the settlement?
To decline.
Okay.
Good.
Uh motion uh made by Mr. Fombi and and second by Mr. Thompson that we decline the settlement offer from the Texas Association of County Regard and Courthouse where? Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Uh number eight, discuss if appropriate approved the purchase of another firewall. Mr. Chen?
Yes, sir. Um initially, when we um went out to update all of these firewalls, um we overlooked one. There's uh one at Mr. Danny Benson's office. At the time was Bill Fuller's. That was the trial. Um and that trial license is about to expire. So we've been having it about a half a year now for free. Um but the new firewall to replace that um would be about, uh let's see, I have a quote here. Five hundred and eighty-two dollars and twelve cents.
How long is that for?
Uh so the device will be ours. We would purchase it for three hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Then the software license for one year is two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. And every year there'll be a license update that that'll be a cost, but the device itself will be ours.
Okay.
And it it's the same as we we put in everywhere else. And like I said, we just we overlooked the one there because it was um it's basically given to us for a while for free.
So if if we improve that facility down there, Shannon, uh and and put it, put three offices in one one building, uh is is this something we could be uh attached to that or what?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This one uh this one is gonna be good for that. Um and it includes Wi-Fi with it. Um the larger that we have at the courthouse covers more bandwidth, but but down there for um where they're at, this one will be fine.
Okay.
Um it it actually says one to ten users um for this size firewall.
Okay.
Um so that would include, so Mr. Danny, uh one tax lady, um two for the JP at that point, that would be only four, right? So we're still under the ten users.
Okay. So does this firewall cover net data too?
No, sir. No, sir. This is just a device that stands on the edge of our network that um helps prevent incoming connections and outgoing. Um you could do website filtering for it, you know, blocking certain sites, whatever you wouldn't want, things like that. It's a security device on the edge of the network.
I'll speak. And we're gonna get any question? I'm just gonna hear a motion. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of another firewall for precinct one upgrade. You're second?
My second. Motion been made by Mr. White and uh second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the purchase of a firewall for precinct one upgrade. Uh any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh.
Okay, number nine is to approve the extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act through the end of the second quarter and making it retroactive to January the first, twenty twenty-one. Uh this is something we should have done early on, but they give us a repetitive to go ahead and get that uh enacted and be in enforced.
I make it on me. My second. Motion been made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act uh through the second quarter. Uh make it re- retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Uh number ten, to adopt and opt-in to the FEMA policy FP two oh four dash oh seven nine dash oh one building code and flood plain management administration and enforcement, Miss Liz.
This is something that came to our attention last week, wasn't it? Yeah. And I thought I had missed something, but oh, it's his first call. He saw it too, so feels bad. But anyway, this is a two thing they got that any expenses during a disaster that uh were incurred about building codes or flood plain management, and we don't have building codes, but flood plain management, we do have expenses during a disaster that we can ask for reimbursement through our disasters. And that's just it in much, you know. It's a big.
So you're talking about uh uh hour uh hours, uh truck, gas?
Yeah, when uh like we just to go out after disaster and and check out room stuff and detectors and all that. All of that is from what I'm reading is what we can get rid of.
By the hour.
On an hour.
Okay.
You know, just like y'all force count labor and equipment and things like that.
It's it's the same thing with red safety.
Yeah, it's the same thing happening. And it does go retroactive too, if I'm not mistaken, who I think will be charged for all that. Because it went back to what, seventeen? So we would be, it's it's because I know she went out of Aurora. So she'll, and I know she's got a law. So she'll send that to me, I'll report it on.
Okay.
Well, we done, we done spent the money, so we didn't get seventy-five percent of it back, darn right.
Some of it back, that's good.
So we give our credit to Olin? Finding this?
Look, I wanna be like, oh, I will put it up with stuff.
Oh, you're not so afraid, okay.
Me and I won't talk about that life.
Well, hey, since we're talking about law, um I think we've all had the same problems. These damn debris trucks have really worked on our roads.
What do they have on them?
Uh is it any? Is it anything out there for that, or we just gonna have to buy the debris?
To talk to a FEMA person about, which I don't have yet, but anyway.
I am telling you right now, they have been as bad on them as a law.
I've seen it, you know.
Okay.
I wrote it down, I'm like, you're usually the brave one.
Okay.
So but that is a question I have for them, if there's, you know, something we can do.
Just so you'll know, I haul ten loads or two before the last two days, patches where they been.
Oh, okay. Because that's that's.
So I'm just.
Those trucks then.
I'm I'm just telling you, it's it's gonna be
Okay.
it it's it's gonna be a costly, it's gonna be a costly part of the precincts budget.
Yeah.
To repair, and I know we got the debris picked up. I'm not bragging about that, but.
It's good spirit.
But but we're gonna, like I said, we're already starting to e- even on the new road, even on some of the roads that we've got.
Yeah, Liz and I done talked about that and and I've always told her to look into that. And especially especially your newly built roads and some of them have been where they put the outriggers on, it's been shifting around and and disturbed it on top. So uh you know, that's that's the reason the question was brought up. Is is there any way we can get rid of first or something?
We're gonna, we're gonna have that discussion when they give me a FEMA person and he's out, and I'm on another project right now. But I don't hear from him by Monday. I'm calling somebody.
Well, we all know it.
Because I need to move forward. We've spent too much money for it to be sitting out there again for six months. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Miss Liz. I hear a motion.
I make the motion. Motion made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. White that uh we opt-in to the FEMA policy FP two oh four dash oh seven nine dash oh one building code flood plain management administration and and reinforcement and enforcement. Uh any discussion? Five oh. Gentlemen, we appreciate it, and it's uh one fifty-five, and I hear some early, make a motion to adjourn.
Selecting.
We adjourn.
Second. Motion been made and second, please adjourn, uh one fifty-five, all in favor?
Of course.